Select Board's meeting, November 12th, 2019. In attendance, Mr. Fox, Mr. Mulglin, Mr. Dede, Mr. Steinhardt, and Mrs. Pendleton.
Good evening, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. The first thing we do is, is this an opportunity, anybody that's not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the Select Board, this would be your opportunity to do that. I'd ask if you would want to make a public statement, please stand and give your name and address. Is there anyone here at this time would like to make a statement? All right, then, we're going to start knocking off a few things before we have our first appointment at 6:40. To acknowledge payables warrant number 2013B dated 11/4/19, the amount of $461,679.97. Payroll warrant number 2010 dated 11/12/19, the amount of $218,193.24. And now I need a motion to approve the regular session minutes of 10/29/19.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Executive session minutes for 10/29/19.
Did Robin put them in the... Are they in your chair?
Are they... Were they attached to that that I just gave you back?
No. I'll print them out, you can still have them tonight, okay?
All right. Then we're moving on. We'll go right under the Action folder. And the first thing is a letter from DPW Director Randy Brown concerning contracted snowplow operators, and we have his recommendation. Randy, you have anything to add?
Not really, no changes from last year. Just a little smaller changes.
So we have... Okay. Cane's Mechanical, Great Brook Lumber, Ferrier Home Improvement, James Grinnell's, Mark Property Service, and Solak Masonary. Okay?
Is it still worth... I think I asked last year, I'll ask again. Is it worth doing how we do this with schools and all that, town hall and all that by inches, and we do everything else by the hour? Does that still work for you?
We do it by the hour. Everything's by the hour.
Oh, we did switch, thank you.
No, I should be switched.
That was the old school way with the old contractor.
Yep.
Boy.
All right, so I need a motion to approve.
So...
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there an orange pumpkin in your backyard that I've been driving by, you haven't been notified yet that it's there? Something bright and beautiful over by the Millings? It's like it's a trailer.
I'm confused. Oh, one of the Asmaw recyclers?
Oh, the Asmaw recycler is it.
Yes.
Mind of that?
Yeah, I'll be going to Daniel's belly, he'll be helping us put on the road.
All right.
Saw it, it was nice.
2A, another letter from DPW Director Randy Brown, and this is regarding proposed bylaw changes. And this is in regards to the Mass Choose It Small MS4 grant permit for stormwater discharge. And basically, you've been working with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission?
We got a grant a couple of years ago, yeah. And I don't want to cut you off.
Nope, nope, go ahead.
So, yeah, we got a grant from Pioneer Valley Planning a couple of years ago to look at our bylaws and incorporating changes we may need as a result of the new and the current permit. So those changes have to be in effect by June 30th of 2020. I did have a meeting with Alan Slusser, John Galloway from our coordinator. We met and looked at the bylaws and trying to make recommendations for, you know, the next step. So this was just to kick off the process, make sure you're aware of what we're looking to do. I think identified the kind of bullet, the few items that we want to make sure we have to change through the bylaws. And then I think the next step is to meet, have a public hearing through the planning board process.
Yeah, because you could only land this on the bylaws.
All right, so...
So you wanted to go ahead and construct those proposed amendments with Alan.
We want to do that, but then it says they have to be in effect no later than June 30th, 2020.
Right. It's going to go as fast as we can.
That's right.
Right, because the Attorney General has 30, 90 days to review, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
We weren't too speedy on this whole process so far, boss.
What's the rush about this?
I could just call another meeting.
Right, I mean, we're doing what we do.
Last time we did that, I processed a million dollars.
Well, how many sinkers do we need?
All right, so I need a motion to give direction to the DPW Director to begin this process.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a question.
Yep.
Related to the same. So I am very familiar with the process for Chapter 185. So if we were inserted into the town code book, does this board need to have a public hearing on saying, in order to insert it as a new law?
Well, Randy and I talked about that. He'll go through the process with town council to see whether or not it would be a town bylaw or if it will be under your rulemaking authority.
Gotcha.
Because, you know, bylaw goes through town meeting, rulemaking does not.
Okay.
So he will sort that out with town council on the appropriate process.
So it may come back to us, right?
Oh, well, it is coming back to you. Even the zoning...
Just to delete it, just to delete it from the zoning bylaws.
This just sends it to him for a hearing, then they send the recommendation, then we put it on the warrant, right?
Right.
But...
Yeah.
That's good that this is coming along. So this was, originally it was done because we didn't really have...
A stormwater entity.
Correct. So that's how the building inspector...
Headed by default.
Correct. Because it was actually administered by the planning board, and they delegated the authority to the building inspector, but now we have the stormwater guy. Makes sense. Great. Thank you.
All right. 3A is a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and it's regard to the Community Development Block Grant. And we were asking for some special conditions.
Yeah, that's just on the home rehabs, and they were, it's not something that they would support the agency, so it's got to be done in a different way.
Okay. So we're working with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to bring it up to...
You're going to be actually signing later in this agenda, the agreement between the town and them to administer the program.
Okay.
Because, you know, they helped prepare the application.
So basically, they accepted three out of four?
Yeah.
Or... Okay. All right, so we'll work on that. 4A is a letter from the Board of Appeals. It's concerning the request for them to respond to the Open Space Recreational Plan. They did not receive it in a timely fashion, or did not get it in a timely fashion, so they're requesting a two-week extension to respond. This letter also went to the Open Space Committee, and I was on that, and we had no problems with giving them extra time to respond.
Oh, yeah, because the draft has already been sent to the state, so by the time they're done with it, this wouldn't be a material problem.
So we, I had our secretary send them a nice note saying that that would not be a problem.
Wonderful.
5A is a letter from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And this is concerning the fact that Mayor Sullivan Westfield has resigned and taking a job with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And he was our liaison to this committee?
Yes, he was our representative for our four towns on the Metropolitan Planning Organization, NPL. So Will Reichelt, who's the mayor of West Springfield, is the alternate, will step forward.
Beautiful.
And now they're looking for someone from either Agawam or Southwick to be probably the new alternate, and then that leaves it toward a position such as a select person or a mayor, which could be Agawam if he wants it.
All right.
So you'll have to consider what you want to do if one of yous wants to.
Well, I think that, you know, we should probably throw our hat in this, you know? We're going to have a couple of newer mayors.
Yeah.
You know, so why don't we put out to the good mayors that we have an interest?
Well, you just need to let that reach deep.
Let's get that straight. You have an interest.
Okay.
Because if we go forward with this, it's your problem, right, Mr. Mulglin?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We would love for Chairman Fox to step up to the plate with the Pioneer Valley PC and do his part.
This is an illustrious position to be in this.
You're not going on vacation ever again.
Oh, I know I'm not. The vacation I just had?
All right.
At least I'm with my wife, I can tell you that.
It's 6:40, and we have an appointment.
Okay.
And Pat Hope regarding firefighter helmet ceremony.
So Patrick has taken part in the Mass Fire Academy, which certifies to the 1-2 level. Patrick spent the last four months, four months, twice a week, and a lot of Saturdays, you know, and a lot of studying for this, but he's completed the program, graduated last week, I believe, week before. And he is now an interior firefighter for us. And then Pat's off, or credit to Pat, during this time also, he's become one of our main drivers on the trucks, too. So while he has that as a profession, a CDL license, he's utilized that getting up to speed on other trucks, so now he's definitely a versatile member of the department.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
We should give him a hat, then. We should give him a hat.
We do.
Just so happens, right here.
But would that come... Two-year commitment, you can't leave for two years, I don't want no starries.
Ten years.
Oh, 10? All right, 10 it is. Wonderful.
Here you are.
Here, give him that hat.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't touch his hand.
You know what? You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. You are right.
Sure.
There you go. Smile, a little bit bigger. There you go.
I know. I'm good.
Excellent.
Yeah. Congratulations.
No, congratulations, and thank you very much for volunteering.
Thank you.
So any scratches on any trucks, we report to you about seven hours, I just heard.
Only if I'm driving.
Better sign that log.
Just want to say, you and Patrick get on really good. Felix wears his pajamas and meetings too.
Well, that's good. Nothing wrong with that.
You drive a Jaguar five yet?
Nice.
We all use the same-sex bathroom now, it's okay.
All right, we're going to move right along now.
All right, and thank you.
Right along, before we get into any trouble.
Too late. Oh, work fast.
6A. What do we got here?
Can you say that over here?
Yeah, you don't have to say it. I mean, we thank you.
Thanks for the appointment.
Thank you, sir.
It's Pat.
All right.
6A is 2019 Appointment Application. This is for Pat Ornion for the 250th Committee.
I'll make that nomination, she's awesome.
I'll second that, sir.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, 7A is an agreement between the Town of Southwick and Pioneer Valley Planning to administer the Community Development Block Fund Program we just discussed earlier. And again, many thanks to Mr. Dede for all his hard work.
Lot happened when I was chairman, you know, you're just reaping the benefits.
You know?
It's all good. That's the way it works.
Somebody's got to reap the benefits from hard work.
Good luck, Doug.
So he is not going away on vacation ever again, ever again, I think.
I think, depending on how it went, I don't think he'd want them.
Oh, I'm not, I'm done.
All right, we need a motion to authorize the chairman to sign.
Motion for the chair to sign.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. Okay, 7A is from DPW Director Randy Brown, and this is the Water System Improvement Project, Change of Orders Number One. Go ahead, Randy.
Couple of things, there was one item for a vent, not a vent on the tank, about $5,000, a small item. The biggest item is we're changing the paving process. So the way we bid it out was we had a bid alternate for the overlay of the lane, the south side of the lane, which we had to do anyways for a permanent DOT. But the way we bid it out, we bid it as an alternate. And the way the project ran it up, there's going to be money left over in the base bid, so there's money left over to do the overlay within, you know, the new delivery.
The net-net.
So it's a very good thing that we're going to...
Yeah, mobile cost.
And I'm saving some money at the end, because we're not going to pave in that road trench and then do an overlay. It's like a second...
Are they going to do that this year, Randy?
Yes, this week.
They are going to do it, huh?
Yeah, or the next week, it'll be done, yeah.
Yeah, because it is a little rough.
Yeah, but...
We talked about, you know, whether we pull out over winter and pave it, but it, just the way it is, they can't do it like that. They don't want to come out, we don't want to maintain it, neither do they.
Plowing it would be...
So it's, and it's better along with all of us to get it done with. So they're going to pave College Highway this year. Jerry Drive, we'll wait till next year. It's still working, Jerry Drive.
Who does this contractor use for the paving?
Northeast Paving, normally Lane Construction.
All right.
Need a motion, or is this...
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we need to sign it.
The markers are meeting tomorrow night, they were supposed to meet last week, so they had a form, so they're...
Where do you want to sign it?
Um...
Oh, jeez. So while we're signing it...
They're meeting on a Wednesday?
So that project's gone, I mean, that pavement patch, as it was, as expected, I guess, right? But the, that project went very smoothly considering the road that it was on and the traffic, and handling the traffic, and the speed at which that contractor worked.
Oh, it was like nine days from...
You said it, not me.
You liked the work of that contractor.
Although I do want to, I do want to thank Mr. Pereira, because I do believe he's made my daughter a much better driver, because she's been working the slalom on Conga Mon Road for going on 90 days now. And she can actually drive that without hitting a single manhole cover or raised structure up there now. Pretty cool, so...
She grazed a few telephone poles.
Yeah. Still use the car, so that's a shame. Good lord. And I, they did get one lane into paving before this deep freeze hit.
Yeah, they're going to come back Thursday, Friday. So that's their whole finish by Friday.
Is that going to be pretty much 90% completed after they get that done, Randy?
More than 90.
More than 90?
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than the final paving, I got some cleanup things to do, some mowing and seeding some areas, some trees may have died, they'll come back in the springtime to place those.
So they're on the hook till the spring for the seeding.
Other than that, they're pretty much done.
So they'll pave that, and then they line stripe it, right?
Yes, so yeah, they line stripe as well.
So it'll be substantially completed, Joe, and then they'll come back.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I guess, I'm glad they're coming back in the spring to plant and seed, because it'll...
Well, they planted seed, but it didn't take over winter.
Absolutely, that's what I'm doing.
It was just like the 57 project, the same thing, they came back and rehydrated some stuff that didn't take.
They'll take them a whole year next year anyways, to how bad, you know, you're talking seven feet, so it's normally no one going to be in a rush now.
That's, I think it's good, though, the cops are out there, right?
No, everyone's, hey, everyone's being...
And basically, you arrest anyone who's driving straight. Those are the drunks, right?
Yeah, that's right.
If everyone's bobbing and weaving, you're full sober, right?
I don't know if the sheriff's going to arrest you.
Town counter, too.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I'd still, and I mentioned this to you once before, how in, you know, in Connecticut, where they put the grooves in the center lines.
Yeah.
I still don't understand why Massachusetts doesn't start going that way, because, you know, at nighttime, you, if you...
It just helps you keep you on the road, right? Especially if you're reaching down for a beer or something.
Well, I mean, if...
This way, it's true.
I know, I'm thinking about people that are texting and not paying attention.
Oh, those...
You hit that, boom.
Yeah.
You know?
It's...
Could we, could we experiment with that on some of our private, our roads?
We are with puddles. We're there.
I think those are more for the reflectors, not necessarily the, like, on a highway.
Does that insert them? Does that allow them to be recessed, Randy?
Yeah, that's why they're...
Because, you know, when you put the thermoplane tape on, that gets peeled and plowed off.
No, but the, like, on 10 and 202, they had to dig a divot for the, they call those bots dots out in California, I don't think they call them here, but for the reflectors in the middle, because of the plows, in California, they don't have this problem, they just set them, and so they become like that rub strip, if you run over them, you start hitting the dots, but...
One thing I don't like about them is that they live a path where water can sit.
Correct.
Okay. So the road breaks down quicker?
Yeah.
Yeah, I always thought it's like, you just paved the road, now you're allowing water to permeate at some point into it.
Okay.
But it's, you can't have it both ways, because it's the first time you plow it if you set them at grade, but plow's going to wipe them right out.
Yeah.
So you have to dig the scallop.
Right.
We could look into it. I remember talking to, I think it was Southfield DPW at the time, after we talked about that , Russ, and it was a state kind of, they trial program, they were...
Okay.
Some communities, I haven't heard...
It does help, though. It really does.
It does help, it wakes you up, I'll tell you.
Yeah.
Slurping is certainly...
Especially because you know when you're in it, and you're like, why, you still got three more seconds? You know, it's just the start of the rumble.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Randy. Ah, next letter. Boy, we got, they're all Randy's letters. 8A, this is concerning holiday hours for the transfer station, and it looks like we have a good schedule here, we're going to have to meet our requirements of the contract a half day before holidays. I would note that, I don't think it's Tuesday, January 31st, but it's 12/31.
Oh, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah. So I'm assuming it's 12/31.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. But no, that looks good, Randy, because we got that extra time to get rid of all the...
Christmas trash.
Christmas trash, and...
Three good days.
Right.
That'll work. That'll do it.
I think it's an excellent thing.
Yeah.
So vote to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next thing, again, from Randy Brown, and this is concerning the MRF contract.
MRF?
Right. And I think we all got the emails on this ahead of time.
We've been talking about it.
Been talking about it. We know now it's going up, but Randy's letter talks about some communities are reaching out to other recyclables.
So I think what he wants us to do is to hold off till into January before we sign the next contract renewal to see if other opportunities arise.
Okay, because we have until January 31st, 2020, to sign this contract.
Right, which would be effective July 1st.
Okay.
Which would allow you to adjust the budget across...
Correct. All right, and we've all are aware that it is going up, there's no doubt about it. We will hold off on this and see what happens. But I think I said at the last meeting, I think we got to get out in front of this thing, you know, especially with the returnables. Get them out of that recycling stream and get them back into the stores, or get them to the Lions, or whoever, Boy Scouts, whoever wants to collect them, because apparently there's a lot of...
Well, how it is, I mean, people go to the transfer station, and you see them throwing in the nickel ones, and...
Right.
And then there used to be other people trying to dive in there, and you can't do it, because once the town takes possession of it, it owns it under the municipal control of...
So I think we need to get out in front and get, encourage people to not place them in there, because that'd be, you know, I'm not saying it's a cure-all, but it'll at least help soften the blow a little bit.
And no more, remember, you don't yield any money on that, you don't, because you don't get the benefit of the return.
No, but we get them.
The best product, the dumpster, the better.
No, I know, but the nonprofit gets...
Right.
Yeah, of course.
I'd rather go to the nonprofit than we pay in to have it disposed.
Exactly, yeah, there's the best.
Because those nonprofits put the money right back into this community, so...
They just don't...
And no more shredded paper?
Yeah. It binds up their system with the process, as we're processing it, it binds up the machines, so no more shredded paper.
That used to be like the basic thing.
You can't win for losing.
Right.
That was one of the basics. Tell you to shred everything, so that you don't give away any of your personal identity information, and then...
Now, how often can we have a bonfire every year?
I'll improve it.
I'll wait for Tower 5 to be put fully into service before I do that at my house.
I was only kidding, only kidding.
When does the other letter...
All right.
No, 26.
All right. 10A, again, from Randy Brown, and Personnel Recommendations. We have, one of our employees has enlisted in the US Air Force, and be leaving on December 17th for basic training, and so we need to fill that position, but it would be a conditional position, because this gentleman has the right to return to his position.
Yep, Randy and I had that with him.
Okay.
Their stuff with him. So this is the first step, is the, obviously, the union requirements for the Highway Division. And then we'll play musical chairs, but at the end of the day, there'll be a net external poster.
But this could be a musical chairs for up to five years?
Well, not, it would be a whole status, but not musical chairs because of this.
Okay.
Right, whoever gets the...
You could actually unwind it, so whoever, the guy that gets hired could lose his job, and everyone else could bump, well, I don't, I don't know, this is probably like leavack, you have to put them back in a similar position.
Right.
It doesn't have to be the exact position they held, correct?
Well, council...
It's as it ever left.
Right.
So his current position. It's as it ever left, so his current position, he keeps all of his scenery, all of his other rights.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. Council's already
So the guy they hire
But it could be
Promote within
The net new person.
And we did talk about
Will be notified of that.
But if if he could be a heavy equipment operator for water, or he'd have to be right back in Highway?
I think he is in Highway.
So then it could unwind the musical chairs too and bump the new guy, newest guy off.
Off.
Okay.
Which they're told when they're hired that if they're
It's a probation for one year, it's five.
Alright, so do we, we don't need to take any vote, this is just notification?
Yeah, I mean it's under the union contract, so it's a straightforward issue.
Okay, most likely someone from the transfer facility would probably be moving?
I I would say likely, but it's, you never know.
Okay.
Until you post it, they don't like to
No, yeah, no one shows their cards.
Alright.
The frost, though, the weed should be down at the transfer station.
God, I hope so, you know, uh while you're here Randy, we're all set for winter, we got plenty of salt.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh new equipment showed up?
We got the uh
Some of it.
Recycler, yeah, yeah, and uh the roller's in too, so we're good there, and right now we're testing out the um the mini excavators, so We had three or four of them.
To choose from.
Tenders came in, the guys all tried them out, and I think they had a consensus on the caterpillar, so.
Okay.
Gonna go forward with that.
And Joe and I and Randy are doing a site visit at the end of the week with uh generator installers.
Oh, what day is that?
The day you chose.
That's wonderful news.
Randy, is Thursday? Ten o'clock, Thursday at ten o'clock.
Awesome, I can make that, that's good.
Alright, so we're all set, uh everything's looking good, and again, a thank you to Senator Humison, Representative Baldiga.
Yeah.
But we're gonna be losing the good senator, so uh while while we're talking about the good senator, I'd like to suggest to the board that we send a letter of congratulations to the mayor-elect of Westfield.
Who figure?
State, state senator, Don Humison.
Oh, okay, now, yeah, wanna wait till he gets in, or you want something?
No, I think we should send it, send it now.
Well, we have an address, right?
Yeah. Our good friend.
Oh, yeah, he's done wonderful thing.
Alright, moving along, eleven, eleven A is a town Southwick job description for the custodian prepared by Labor Council, and twelve A is town of Southwick job descrip- description for maintenance person.
Yep, you know, of course know we're working on that project with Fred and Kim, you've, she's appeared before you many times.
Okay.
So these are updated ones.
Alright.
That Bobby Johnson and uh Sandy gave us input on.
Okay.
Kim and I work on them.
Alright, so this, we'll consider this our first reading of them?
Oh, yeah.
Well, these aren't policies.
Still, we like to do a first reading and then a second reading, so that'll give everybody a chance to prepare for next meeting where we can act on it. Alright, thirteen A is a request from uh the Southwick Recreation Center for a a one-day liquor license for a holiday party, uh December seventh, twelve PM to eleven PM, uh expect around two hundred people.
Oh, it's a martial arts.
Is Santa, is Santa coming dressed up like a Minion?
Santa's gonna get his book.
Well, he'll be here at five thirty, but then maybe he's going over there. A little Taekwondo.
Alright, so the way
So I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain.
Yeah, I want what he's having.
What belt are you, are you black belt, red belt?
Uh, I got belted once.
Yeah.
Probably twice.
We might go over there and have a couple of belts.
He got belted once and bit twice.
Yeah, that's true.
Alright, alright, okay, okay.
Once and twice now.
Fourteen
Anyways.
Fourteen A is a letter of interest uh from Ruth Preston to uh fill the position on the Historical Commission. And right now, we have a shortage uh where they cannot even, don't have a quorum to meet and uh elect a chairperson, and we're in a
Be very helpful in resolving the sale of the library.
Right, because uh we need their signature to do that, they also need to appoint somebody to Community Preservation, so.
Well, yes Cindy, that's that's another person that uh, is that deadline?
No, 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 I'm talking about historical
Oh, their designee.
Their designee.
Designee from Historical.
Right, so uh this is the only applicant we've gotten, Cindy?
Yeah, we've advertised it several times.
Okay, so a motion to
I'd love to make a motion.
I'll second the motion for Ruth Preston.
All in favor?
Preston.
Aye.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's unanimous.
Yeah.
It is unanimous.
It's unanimous.
Ruth, welcome aboard.
Alright, if you could reach out to Mr. Hamburg and tell him that he now has a committee.
Yeah, he's aware of this meeting and what's going on, and is very thankful to be able to meet again.
Okay.
Because he's got an important meeting he needs to hold next week.
Alright, I think the next thing, we're need to sign this sewer abatement as sewer commissioner.
Well, you have the holiday
And the amount of uh abatement amount toll suit shows, abatement amount fifty-five dollars and fifty cents.
For whom?
Um, James Henderson, Fifty-three Miller Road. It says Summers, Connecticut, oh, it's for uh twenty-two Highland Way and Southway, that's Island Pond, right?
Sure.
I don't think we have a Highland.
We got an Island Pond.
Yeah, that we have, I thought you said Highland.
Yeah.
Summer's, Connecticut.
Yeah, Miller Road, Summers, Connecticut.
He must live there and he's a rental.
Yeah.
Why are we doing it?
Uh apparently uh calculation error on usage. So I
Generally what happens is when the water condition is ruled on something, which they will be, maybe tomorrow, you have a correspondent chair if it's a, if it's a
Correct.
Water customer who has a sewer Yeah, I'm just asking what it was.
Alright.
Done with that for many years, Mr. Mogul, in the past, with certain individuals in town.
We have a motion made, do we have a second?
Second that, boy.
All in favor? Aye. We'll sign it.
Mr. Chairman, you have a calendar in your chair mail for telling me when you want to do a holiday gathering.
What's all
March.
What's all this other stuff?
It's all your chair mail.
Okay.
There's um also the executive here for you to approve, he had this under the
Alright, let Mr. Didi sign this first.
Let me sign this.
Okay.
I did it two years ago.
Alright, I'm gonna go through this one at a time.
No, no, Russ, uh Mr. Didi did it.
Alright, Didi, the next thing I have in the action folder is courts out order, is the uh two-fiftieth committee is uh having a banner walk, uh it's this Sunday
This one night?
From one to four.
I had to write that down too.
Three hours?
Right.
Detroit walking from this center of town.
We just did it in a parade.
Took us an hour.
Well, not the way we marched this week, it was like thirty-five seconds.
Forty-eight minutes.
We had a dead run.
We had a ton of issue too, so I don't know
We had a police car chasing us.
Yeah, now you're starting a tannery row.
It was a very enjoyable parade.
And since Rush Fox is involved, everyone has to bring their little weeding things, so any cracks in the sidewalk as we go, we're gonna pluck those out.
Anyways, uh this is this Sunday.
Do you have the banners?
Yeah, they're coming up tomorrow.
Right, uh so this will give, this is open to the public, but it's also to uh thank the people that sponsored the banners, individual banners, uh that the DPW is graciously gonna erect uh tomorrow and the next day?
Over the next two days, yeah.
Over the next two days, and it'll give people an opportunity, if they'd like to walk, we'll shuttle them down to uh Tractor Supply, and they can walk back to Town Hall for some light refreshments, or we have a PowerPoint presentation right here at Town Hall. But it is open to the public, and uh we we hope people turn out.
One of the events.
One of the events.
Herey, herey. One of the monthly events, right Russ?
Got a big top hat and a French coat.
I don't, but I got a bunny suit I could wear.
Ya'ol Fox.
I got some batteries for you.
Ya'ol Fox.
Ya'ol.
Alright, now this
Great, step on, talk to everybody.
The next is uh a nice letter from Superintendent Jen Willard for our annual roundtable meeting, uh our budget roundtable meeting. And this will be Thursday, November twenty-first at five thirty PM in the superintendent's conference room.
I already have time, huh?
So, yeah, so uh Finance Committee has been notified?
Yeah, so, yep, they got there.
So usually we like to go and uh we'll prepare anything that we see that's on the horizon as far as the town of Southwick is concerned. Uh so that we can uh go over that with the school. Alright, then we have a letter from uh Lieutenant Governor Polito. And congratulations on entering into a second community compact with the Baker-Polito administration. Is this something that uh Mr. Mogul's working on?
Yeah, that was the item that Doug and I were authorized to work on, so we filed it.
Douglas Mogul, look at you, getting
Earl did all the heavy lifting, I'm not gonna lie.
Okay.
Well, it was great, we got that last one, but now to get another one, that's that's tremendous.
Unbelievable.
It's tremendous.
You get pumper
Well, this one doesn't really equate to a lot of money, it's just planning documents and reporting, modernizing things.
But it take, it all adds up.
Next year, we'll be able to go for the big one again with IP.
There you go, you you know, you have to learn how to crawl before you walk.
Threat count on that paper.
What's this, another?
Yeah, that's that's another one, thanking you for um participating in the first one.
Oh, so another letter from uh the good Lieutenant Governor Polito, good friend of the town of Southwick, been out here many times.
Many times.
Uh thanking us for being successful in that first. And there's that one-day liquor license again, which we always agreed to.
Should we sign it?
Uh, well
I got, I got the no.
Get, she'll stamp it, she'll stamp it. Okay, the next thing is a FYI, and this is the uh food pantry having their uh community benefit.
Perfect, it's right after the budget roundtable.
Uh it's beer tasting.
That's next week.
It's uh Thursday, November twenty-first.
That's a good time.
Six to eight PM at Westfield River Brewing, right here in in Southwick.
Five thirty.
Five thirty, it's twenty-five dollars in advance, and you can get tickets at Westfield River Brewing, the Mason Agency, or the Southwick Florist. And desserts by
Work for me, and you can get it for free.
Desserts by Malicious Farms.
Yeah.
Food by Craft Meats and Smokehouse, live music by Sam uh Sam Chevalier and Jeff Roberts. So a good time had by all, and for a good cause, just before the holidays, Thanksgiving. Alright, and I I think Cindy wants us to pick out our meeting schedule for December, I thought
No, that's for, you already did that.
We already did that.
That's for the
That's for the holiday cheer festival gathering.
Alright, so we know the seventh is the civic fun.
Yeah, so it's the, yeah.
Okay. Um We know the thirty-first is the kickoff to
Kickoff seven?
Our two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration. So what, and uh
We usually hold on on Friday, don't we?
Alright.
So it's the twentieth?
Um
Maybe the fourteenth, I don't know.
Friday, the thirteenth?
Fourteen, oh, we do, oh, Friday, I got you, I'm so sorry, I was looking at Saturday dates. Yeah, yeah, I guess the twentieth, you're right. Start of the vacation week for the kids, they get out of school, there'll be snow in the air, yeah, that's up to you guys, so, I'm game.
The sixteenth will be the fire.
Let's write that down, the sixteenth
Sixteenth is a fire.
I guess we might be invited to that too. What town's that in?
American Legion.
Very beautiful, keeping it close to home.
Oh, that's right, last time was the golf course, right?
Yeah.
No.
Legion last year too.
Legion last year.
Yeah, they had the sweater contest there.
Oh, yeah.
Remember that, little flashbacks, boys? That guy that took his sweater off and said his chest with his sweater on.
Alright, what's the pleasure of uh the group? Go with Friday, the thirteenth or the twentieth?
I'm checking my calendar.
Yeah, check your calendar, Doug.
The only thing I'm thinking is if we did it on the thirteenth, a lot of people have holiday parties.
Yeah.
And people, you know, picking up kids from school.
I'm out of town on the thirteenth, and that's fine.
Oh, 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 okay.
I am literally out of, and I'm not taking my wife.
You mean on the twentieth, Russ, getting ready to leave?
Yeah, stuff like that.
No, I got you.
That may be too close.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking. It it, if we had enough time, I'd I'd do it on the sixth, that way we're all set up for
Oh, you're absolutely right, Festivus Day.
For the seventh.
Yeah.
Look, we need that big room, though, they have something in there on the
Yeah, but we don't set up to that morning, cuz it's not until the afternoon.
And the tables would be there, the chairs.
I believe there is.
On Saturday?
Believe there is.
But we didn't book that because we, yeah, the civic funds get it.
On the seventh.
You don't have a scout thing, we didn't book it.
Talking about that booking, I know she was, you know, she wanted to have it down in the community center, but I don't know the results.
Right, right, but we weren't gonna allow them to do setups on the Friday night anyway.
I'm good with you there, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Didi's out of town.
Well, that's what I mean, if we did it on the sixth
Twelfth and thirteenth, I am out of town.
So if we did it on the sixth
Yeah.
It's, everything would be set up for the seventh?
Yeah.
They're two different setups, right?
It's close enough. It's, yeah, tables and chairs, tables and chairs. We wouldn't have a problem, I mean, it would be fine.
And that way, Mr. Didi would be here, we're, you're in town on the sixth?
Yes, so with the same people that are coming to the event, the event's on the seventh?
The evening of the seventh is when Santa comes, yeah.
Right, so I mean
Saturday, okay.
So if we set up on the
You just can't have the participants showing at the same time.
No.
I have no event on the sixth at all.
Okay.
So, everybody's setting up on the seventh?
Yeah, yes.
Nobody's setting up Friday night?
No, no.
So we could do it Friday, the sixth, it's early in the season, maybe we'll get more people. It does that, I know that you guys do the lion's share of the work, so does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine, we'll do whatever we gotta do, um still wanna go to each restaurant?
Yeah, the board usually designates one of its members to
Yeah, we usually do.
Mr. Didi, thank you.
Glad I could help.
Well, you knew I I screwed it up, so
Oh, we 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 remember well, yeah, yeah.
So
Pray tell.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't have the
You don't.
You're right.
God, no, putting out your fires today, so.
Joe, I'll help you out as best I can.
Alright, there we go.
Mugsy, you were coming with me no matter what.
We did it, we did it two years ago, we'll do it again.
There we go.
Just don't send me to that one restaurant I'm not allowed in.
Yeah, and I won't send you there.
Alright.
Can I just chime in, I don't think I'm, if you initiate, but Park and Rec has an event downstairs on the sixth.
Thank you, sir, I was wondering when their Christmas thing was.
Always the first Friday and Sunday.
Man.
But that, this one will be over by, what time is theirs?
I I don't know of times, I'm just
Santa's Cuz ours is over by seven at the latest, right?
Yeah, but you can't have the groups mixing.
Right.
Yeah.
You can't have the groups mixing.
Oh, no, we'll hear about it, yeah, you're absolutely right, we'll hear about it. Can't do it.
Back to the thirteenth.
No, back to the twentieth, cuz he's out of town.
Twenty, oh, why do we do it on a Friday, why don't we, whatever. The people that come don't stay all night anyways, it's not like it's
I have a crazy
It's not a drinking night, cuz we don't have any booze here.
Here's the crazy one.
Alright, throw it at us, Mugsy.
What what's our meeting schedule look like for December?
The third, the tenth, and the seventeen.
Yeah, three, ten, seventeen, cuz we may be, you may be signing a bond uh issue on the seventeenth. Because of the sale of bonds.
So what are you thinking?
The tenth.
Think we do it on, we could, I'm, it's crazy, do it on the seventeenth, it's Tuesday, and we have our meeting at seven thirty or seven fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
So we have our, you can have the holiday party, everyone's gone at seven o'clock.
It usually starts at five thirty, it's over by seven, Carl's saying no, then the twentieth it is.
I think the seventeenth works, just make it our, it'll be, whatever that session we call it there.
Well, no, you'd have to, I don't, I'm not sure it could be consent agenda.
Okay.
I'm not sure there's gonna be a bond document coming, and I'm not sure if they're coming the tenth.
Alright, gotcha.
Cuz we're gonna be opening them up the end of this month, beginning of December, and you've got, you know, seven to ten million dollars, so there's gonna be a lot of reading, signing, voting.
So how's the tenth work?
So the twentieth is good then.
So
Or the tenth, we could do it the Tuesday, the tenth?
Why don't we just go with the twentieth?
Twentieth.
You know, we've we've kicked
Between dad tail performance and a cheer party.
Wait, do we eat a permit of a month?
We beat them to death, the twentieth?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, it's the twentieth.
March eighteenth it is, alright.
And uh Mr. Didi has volunteered, along with the assistants with Mr. Mogul, so it it's 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 great. Alright, next thing, I already talked about
We got some new restaurants that we gotta hit up this year, Josh.
True.
Banner, we already talked about, alright, Department of Criminal Justice, fingerprinting?
Dun dun dun.
Would the deli be open by then?
Did you read it?
I I read this.
So this is something the lieutenant gave us as the supervising licensing agent.
Yeah.
And it would relate to um, he thinks for canvassing, cuz that's been an issue even for Cindy, with people coming in and canvassing without appropriate background checks, and then of course, probably for liquor, so if the board is so inclined to think about this, then Bob could come to a future meeting and go over with it.
Okay, why don't we do that? Let, invite the lieutenant in, alright, fire. And we've kept the chief here
Yell that in a crowded room.
We've kept the chief waiting, and we could have uh had him up here at any time.
We have
Uh Russ, you wanna go over this uh proposal here, uh energy proposal?
Energy?
Do you wanna do this first?
These are, this is a, an auditing company that, under an incentive program by the uh EverSource that was done at the police station, the fire station, and Town Hall.
Okay.
Uh we're, right now, we're paying off stuff at the DPW building and the library, so um I met with them last week with Bob and these people have already done site visits and met with the chief or his designee and the police chief and his designee to undertake these energy improvements, just like the Mass A program. And these are highly leveraged, if you turn, you look at the amount that the incentive is gonna be on the total is even on the fire department, they're gonna be paying over fifty-four percent of the capital cost
Yep.
To EverSource, because they have the funds to do this project.
Okay.
So they're now, once I signed off on it, they're now running the final calculations for it to come for the board with an updated report, so that the board would be in a position to decide whether it wants to move forward on it and authorize a chair to sign them. And again, this is to address issues that the uh fire department has in its bays and its exterior lighting and some other areas, so uh it's a significant investment, so it needs to happen in those buildings too.
Okay.
And you know, with the right time, but
You gotta put the samples in?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the police chief has done the same.
All right.
You got them back, which...
So...
So you've got them for police, fire, and Town Hall.
Okay, and where we talked about loan payments, uh, it's apparently twenty-four, so it's monthly?
Twenty-four months.
Twenty-four months, and...
And if you look at the right-hand side, it shows you the savings versus the payments and whatever.
Okay, but we don't have funds available at this particular time, do we?
No, this is, this, this comes, the savings on the electrical charges.
Yep.
Supposed to net you the amount of money to pay the bill.
Oh, okay.
And all our others...
So we do have funding within their budgets, if everything works correctly.
You'd be paying, it's the savings, it's based upon the save.
Right, right. But we do have money in our...
Budgets, yeah.
Right, okay.
So Russ, years ago, when Mr. Westcott was here, like, for a couple years, every year, we had a new group come in front of us for this building, and all those have expired, right, all those net savings and payment plans?
This one's rolling off, too.
Right.
Well, no, in between then, we had done DPW, and I think the boat ramps, and then maybe...
Right, you know, right.
The Siemens thing.
It was the same Siemens thing, and, right, yep.
But this isn't Siemens, this is through EverSource.
Understood.
This is an EverSource program.
No, I was just making sure.
When you pay your monthly electric bill, you're getting a surcharge that you're paying, and it's going into this account that they're going to do these incentives.
Right, okay. All right, next thing is that same letter from Jen Willard. And this, next one is, uh, uh, we had a resignation on the regional school committee.
Hmm?
Um, Kyle. Uh, we just elected Kyle in, uh, May, and he's, um, found out that, uh, because of his work schedule has changed, he no longer feels he has the time to fulfill his duties.
And responsibilities.
So we need to have a joint meeting with the regional, Southwick Regional School Board members.
Southwick side of the whole thing.
No, Southwick. Just the Southwick people, and with the select board, and we've done this once before.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
A couple of years ago. And, uh, they've already posted the vacancy, and...
Yeah, it would appear, Mr. Chairman, since their vacancy is due December second, um, and your meeting schedule aligns up, the third would be too soon, but the tenth would be fine. We should also publish this on our website, too.
Right.
Right, cause you had set the tenth, so, the third would be the day after the...
Yeah, that'd be too soon. That's too soon.
So, unless you wanna go to a school committee meeting.
No.
Well, then, your meeting is the...
Hey, now.
The tenth, right.
So if you're good, we could notify them.
Notify them.
A meeting with them tomorrow on some other issues.
Sounds great. That's too bad, cause Kyle's, uh, I think, a very good addition. All right, the last thing I have in the action folder is this quick claim deed, and go ahead, uh, Mr. Steinhardt?
Well, Mr. Chairman, you have before you the, uh, the deed that was prepared by town council, um, working with the buyer's attorney for the sale of the old library.
All right.
So, you would be signing up on that, because you've already, as you recall, at a previous meeting back in early September, you signed off on the purchase and sales with Ben Doyle and Dave Berson there?
Yep.
So this is the next step of that, and then the step after this will be to finalize the historic preservation restriction, will be, which will be done by the historical commission meeting next week. At their meeting and signing off on it, and then you'll also sign off on it. So when you sign off, when you vote on this and sign this, you'll also want to vote to authorize the board to sign the preservation restriction.
So, a motion to sign...
Both the deed.
Both this quick claim deed, and...
The historical preservation restriction that relates to the sale of the old library.
So moved?
So moved, but I think you have to give the chair authorization to sign the historical preservation restriction.
No, you're all listed as signing members.
Oh, okay, so moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
A little sideways here for a penny, will it be done before the first of the year?
I'm not taking that bet.
I'm not either, sad to see.
All right, so...
Get that penny out.
Is there anything else, I see?
Sir, there's a thank you card.
Yeah, invite from the Hood Cafe in your mail.
Okay.
Only one place, Carl? There's only...
Oh, a thank you from, uh, Officer Taggart. You know, for his, uh, award from the Southwick Rotary. And, okay, then we had an invitation from, now they call it the Hood.
Ooh, I can't say that in South... We are not judging it the Hood.
And, uh...
I can show you the Hood.
That's on the, uh, eighteenth, is it? I believe it's from five to seven, uh, it's, uh, for business, different businesses, and, uh...
They really changed the name to the Hood?
Yeah. Uh...
Yeah, what did it used to be called?
Red Riding Basket.
Red Riding Basket, which was, it's all good.
That's why I, I couldn't figure out why.
It was a strict business decision.
Well, they come from us for changing anything.
Yeah, have to change your liquor license.
It doesn't change it.
They...
So...
I think it's a nickname.
Yeah.
All right.
Sure, I can put it down now?
Okay.
The other documents, the preservation restriction.
Anyways, it's, uh, it's an opportunity for, uh, uh, anybody that can attend, I got a two-hundred-and-fiftieth meeting that night, so I cannot make it.
When is it?
It's, uh, Monday, the eighteenth.
Next Monday.
Right, oh.
Oh, it's in the evening?
Yeah.
I'm, uh, I got that same meeting.
Yeah.
Mr. Moguln, are you available on the eighteenth in the evening?
I believe I can make it for a while, but I think we have the high-speed internet subcommittee meeting that night as well, but I'll get there.
All right.
You do that, you know what, and I'll stop by at lunchtime and get a cup of soup, they got great soup there. They really do, I enjoy their soup.
Let me know.
All right.
What do you mean to do lunch?
So...
You gotta get the piece.
Anything else under old business?
Just that the high-speed internet committee met last week, and, uh, we reviewed, we had a presentation from the Westfield Fiber guys, and then, uh, we're gonna be in touch with Verizon and Comcast this week, to potentially have a guest speaker, if possible, for our next meeting.
Nice. Did you see, was it East Hampton that just voted to, uh, form a...
Holio.
Holio, just voted to form a, their own municipal, uh...
It was Holio.
Yeah. All right, Carl, anything under old business?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I remember the chairman of the Board of Health today, and they're, they're gonna be, uh, doing, um, interviews for health director in early December. So, and we will be assisting him in the process, as we do as a personnel entity and HR function for other high-ups.
Super.
So, uh, you know, we'll be working things out with Labor Council and all the normal steps we do when we bring on a department head.
Okay. Uh, the only thing I had under old business was, we had the Veterans Day ceremony yesterday, I think it was a very good ceremony. We still have a, a hearing issue, you know, uh, the speaker.
Well, that's their equipment.
I know, but maybe we could try to assist them, and, uh...
Just have Dennis go and run their sound systems with them, in the future.
We run into this every year, it's unfortunate that it's last minute on either, um, whoever's doing it, and sometimes they're, they're quick enough, and we have the equipment out there, and sometimes it gets, the ball just gets dropped and it's not there.
Yeah.
Uh, I would suggest that the fire department, when they order the new tanker truck, uh, have a P A system installed, so then we can at least have the truck there with the P A system, and we will be good to go, that's what we're missing.
You mean the pumper?
Whether we park a cruiser or pumper, or whatever, whether we park a cruiser there...
I'm sure it was running to capacity, what they had, though, I don't...
Yeah.
I don't know if somebody could, just turned it out.
Right, on top of that.
It was very loud where we were, but people that were further back said they were at different...
And if the wind wasn't right, probably it didn't help.
Well, it's like somebody was saying, you know, why can't you just put two additional speakers, like, if you had them in the trees or something?
Yeah, well, maybe the select board should look at that next year with their gift account, maybe there is something that can be done, that could be permanently put in those trees, and...
Well, I'm just thinking...
With the panels being put.
When the panels need to be put in.
Oh, we could put it in the panel.
Put it in the panel, oh, a talking monument, hell of a...
Yeah, but we, you know, uh, you know, we need to, uh, remember that we have the two-fifty next year.
Oh, we do.
And there be, might be opportunities to use sound systems at other events, that, that maybe we should try to work on something now.
Yeah, I agree with you.
You know?
They're inexpensive enough, and just having enough qualified people to run it.
Right.
Whenever they're needed, not just so much.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, I don't know how well our new podium projects, it does have a speaker unit.
But it can also have its output to it, so you could use the local, the speaker in the podium for the people close to us, and then put the speakers for their back.
Right.
Especially with Wi-Fi now and everything else, technology, I'm sure there's something out there that's a flick of a switch, not running wire everywhere, and...
I mean, the fire department just got a new sound...
Battery-operated one.
Battery-operated.
Speakers are still connected, but I think a lot of it is just how you set it up.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, they should hire a flashpoint to come do that for them.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we can, uh, brainstorm and see if there isn't some, uh, somebody that's tech-savvy in that field that could make a recommendation.
Yeah, that, that guy's getting them worn pretty thin.
Hmm. All right.
Different career.
Move, move on to new business. Uh, the first thing is the, uh, Southwick Fire Department ambulance rates update and policy review, I think everybody got a, um, copy somewhere. I did have a copy somewhere, oh, here.
Yeah, I have mine in the chiefs.
I saw that in the cabinet, yeah.
Okay.
This is just...
Russ, you wanna just give a...
Yeah, so, well, you have, the big package is basically kind of the history of where we are today.
Yeah.
Mr. Chief, we need to make that disclosure before we hear this, right? We all have to go on record that we're gonna all file with the town clerk and the Ethics Commission, because we will be voting to set rates that, God forbid, any one of us could also end up in the ambulance and so on and so forth, subject to the rates and waivers and so on that we're setting.
I was gonna handle that.
Oh, well, it's, we better get it out there and get it over with now, so now that we've all signed off, that allows it...
So, so basically, it'd be a two-stage, you have the report, and then where we go with the range, you see how we compare to the neighboring communities, there's the, for the ethics, and then at a later meeting, we'll actually talk about the details of the, the report and where you go.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry, I thought we had to get that out in front.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, so that's out in front now, and, and everybody...
I mean...
Okay.
What do you say, right, Russ is the one who wants to use the ambulance?
Well, here's...
Required disclosures.
All right, we have two disclosures that we're signing, are approving.
Dog bites or nothing?
Uh, no, one is...
These are ones for myself and the chief, who are involved in administering the policy.
I understood, yeah.
So, it says board of selectmen, but are all three of us signing this?
You would just acknowledge, and the chair could sign it.
Okay.
Motion for the chair to sign.
I'll second that.
Okay, and again, one for Carl Steinhardt, and one for Russ Anderson.
I mean, you're already automatic.
As S A D?
Yeah, but you're gonna disclose, you're gonna disclose it on a different floor.
Right.
Anyway, in five, at the clerk's office.
Wow.
Crazy, huh?
You have no appointing authority.
It, it, you know, we take that...
I get it, but just...
We take that ethics test every two years, and it's still confusing, is...
I know.
I'll get out.
I guess this, the C A O was explaining, cause of the waivers and so on and so forth, that we could potentially conflict it.
There you go.
Okay, yeah, this is, uh, what I did.
And it looks just like yours.
Yeah.
It will, it will, I'd be like this.
All right, okay, so we'll take care of that, um... We've already talked about the fingerprinting policy, EverSource, Roundtable, any other... What's, oh, we do have other new business, Randy Brown, uh...
Right, right.
Grant application for Claus Anderson Road Culvert and Flood Mitigation Project.
Talking signature.
Letters.
Yeah.
This is, uh, sorry, I've got to hand you some grants for the Claus Anderson Road Culvert.
Okay.
There's another culvert, just at the driver crossing downstream, that could also part this bigger project, and it would benefit, um, that whole area, cause if we're allowing more water flow through this culvert...
Next problem.
...it could cause more harm downstream, so...
Sure.
We'll have to expand the scope of that M D P program to incorporate...
That.
That into it.
The crossing, yeah.
Okay, so you're looking for the chairman to sign off on this?
So moved, so moved.
Second, yeah, all in favor?
So, what was the numbers, cause when Cindy had, I said, just what's the project budget and the numbers?
Oh, um, it's on that letter, I think the project budget's like seventy-one thousand.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's the grant, there is a, there was a twenty-five percent match.
Right.
That you can use town staff.
Yep, no, I read that part, I just saw all that, I just wanted, I just, when I first got it, I said, what's the universe, what are we talking about?
Copy for Carl.
Twenty-five percent of what?
Yeah, okay, so everybody's got a copy of that. Okay, that's, the action folder is now empty, any other new business?
Yeah, there's one, hold the phone for one second.
Yep.
It's coming your way right now.
Yeah, this is another, uh, actually, I, I have another new business thing, too.
You wanna do this one first?
Yeah.
Why don't you take care of that?
Yep, this is one, uh, as the, uh, C A O, I just wanna let you know, we are doing the process of recruiting two more firefighters. So, some people in the pool may be related to people, so the chief has a, uh, a person who's related to him, so the board needs to also acknowledge this by signing off on this, uh, disclosure, that he's disclosed it to you, as his appointing authority, that it could be an individual in his household going through that selection process, with an independent team of interviewers.
Okay.
So, we clear on that?
Yep.
Okay, and this is again, he's doing the appropriate filing under two sixty-eight A.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
This one, you should acknowledge that...
Just to...
Who's gonna sign it? Does the chair sign it?
Um...
Or is he just gonna file with the town clerk?
Right.
Usually that's just filed with, that's for the appearance thereof, so he's filed with the town clerk.
Uh, not elected to your position, you will file it with your appointing authority, that's you.
Okay.
So we're filing it with the appointing authority.
All right.
So we'll give it to the clerk, you are the appointing authority.
Make a motion to accept that disclosure.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
All right, file it, all right.
What else you got?
Okay, the next item I have is the, uh, council on aging, and the police want to, uh, announce that they're having a drug take-back day, which will be...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, November thirteenth, nine AM to one PM, so obviously, me saying this any later would not be news anymore, so...
It's not old business yet.
Right, so this is why this was being, um, promoted, so this just came to us today, and I wanna make sure the board is made aware of it.
And I've always asked this question, I've never gotten an answer yet, when people turn in old prescriptions, do they remove the label of what it is and who is it for?
No.
They leave it all, so they know what, whose it was, and...
Well, if it goes into the police station, it goes into that double-sealed vault, sort of, and that's boxed and burned from the sheriff's department.
Okay.
And then, I think the sheriffs are prob, I don't know, but I'm assuming the sheriffs are involved in this, and they box and burn.
So you don't remove any label, but it is confidential, and, yeah, okay.
Russ, we already know.
Let me also, I, actually, I...
It's from the dog, by the way.
The other reason you'd wanna leave the labels on, frankly, is a practical one, I, cause I called when I had this exact situation, and I had to transport a significant quantity of opiates across town, God help you if you get pulled over, and you've got prescription bottles with no labels on them in your car, and your answer is, I'm going to the police station to drop them off? See you in fifteen to twenty. That's why they leave the labels on, honestly, God.
They're not mine, they're for a friend.
That's right, they're for a friend, I'm just holding them.
I had a mother-in-law do that, you know?
Trunkload. You said had. See? Did you all work out for me?
Ooh, it's gonna all work out.
All right, so thank, thank you for that notification.
So basically, your mother-in-law should scratch them off, everyone else should leave them on.
Exactly.
They should have the color.
All right, we need to approve the executive session minutes of Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen. One for that guy down there, I'm trying to get it.
Take your time.
I don't know what that is, I think I stole that from you. There's that.
Motion approved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, pass them back, please.
Yeah, I'll be meeting with Fred this week.
Okay. New business?
No, I'm done.
Okay.[1580.54]